Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. This is our Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. We will start with a roll call of our members. Rojia Afshar.
Present.
Matthew Bandle.
Present.
Robert Canto.
Present.
David St. Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
Scott Halston.
Here.
Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Kyla Zimmerman.
Present.
Is on, and I will note for the record that Mike Tucci is absent this evening. Mr. Chair, it's all yours.
Thanks, Shannon. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the September 9th, 2024 Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Welcome back, Commissioners, from the summer break. We'll get through it together. We have one. Oh, we've got to do the legal notice. I almost forgot. See, I got to get back in the swing.
Get in routine. Get the routine back.
Hit it, Liz.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, September 9, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following applications. Kathleen M. Braga, application for special permit for clearcutting and restoration plan within ridgeline protection area located at 37 and Lot 9484 Prattling Pond Road, R80 Zone. Kathleen M. Braga, application for special permit for detached accessory dwelling unit at 37 Prattling Pond Road, R80 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation is in person is at One Montez Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website. Copy, this proposal is online and available by or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 23rd day of August, 2024, Town Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, Liz. All right, we have one new business item. We have to accept an application from Bulwark LLC. We get a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application for special permit from Bulwark LLC for blasting associated with development of lots 8120 and 8122 Colt Highway and schedule a public hearing for October 7, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we will jump right into our public hearings. Just a few sort of guidelines that I go over each time before we get into our public hearing portion. More process oriented, so the applicant will present to the commission. The Commissioners will have an opportunity to ask their questions, and then we'll open it up to the public, first folks that are in the room, and then we'll go to anybody that might be in online. Once all the public comment has been received, we'll ask the applicant to respond. We ask generally that you keep your comments limited to five minutes, please, and that's more about being respectful of both the public and the commission's time. The public comment's extremely valuable, so we don't want to overly cut into that, but we just want to be efficient with our time. So with that being said, we'll start with public hearing number one, Kathleen Braga, application for special permit for clearcutting and restoration in ridgeline protection area.
I haven't done this before, so I'm not sure what you want me to start with, just sort of the history of kind of what happened. So we have a tree company. We live up on Prattling Pond Road, and it was a season of not being super busy. We didn't want to lay off any of our guys. When we purchased the property from Mary Jean Jones, she had indicated to us that we could kind of maintain that area. Never thought about ridgeline stuff, quite honestly. It just, I don't know what happened, but it just was an oversight on our part. So ignorance is not an excuse. We are aware of that, and we certainly are very interested in making it right. And working with the Farmington Land Trust as well, again, that in the deed very clearly stated that we had the rights to go in and, you know, kind of just maintain the area. So my husband went in and keeping the guys busy, so we didn't have to lay anybody off. And, you know, did some did some removals and, you know, he talked about the scrubby stuff and the dead stuff and, you know, again, in his estimation, what was done was fine. And then we got the letter with the cease and desist letter, and so we ceased and resisted. And then have just been kind of working back and forth with F L T as well as with the town about what the plan should be to rectify. So we proposed planting some bare root because obviously we are up on the ridge. There is little to no ability to plant something super sustainably up there. You know, there's no way to get equipment down there. I, after work today, put on tall boots because the last time we went traaping, I did end up with a little poison ivy on my ankle, so this time I put on tall boots. And, you know, just to kind of take some pictures. And, you know, when this all first happened, I want to say we had a discussion. It was like February or something, wasn't it? I forget the exact timeline, but it was, there was no, there was no green when we went and we first kind of did this, or maybe it was the fall. And so I had said, you know, I really wanted to wait until the green season happened again to be able to say, hey, listen, you know, nature is taking its course and nature, Mother Nature is bringing things back. And you can see, you know, as I traipsed around today, there is quite a lot of growth. And when the F L T and I went a week or two ago, you know, there's actual, you know, oak trees. Now, they're this big and they are re-sprouting. So, you know, we didn't dig up stumps. We didn't do any of that. Part of the reason why I wanted to take these pictures was, Shannon, I don't know if you have access to the pictures with the where it looks terrible.
I have. So I've got.
Those are the ones from F L T, from Randage. So, yeah, so that looks terrible, and I agree. That's horrible. But now flip back over to now where we are, and that's what's happened. So there's a ton of nature. There's a ton of, you know, Mother Nature's taking its course. One of the things that we talked about was kind of going in, and if there's, you know, branches or things that are still laying on the ridgeline. And really, ultimately, that's going to disturb the new growth that's coming. And I couldn't even really find it as I was traipsing around this afternoon. I was trying to find places so I could take pictures of, oh, look, here's some of that still left there. I mean, it's just being absorbed in, and I know that I've talked, I think it was with Shannon, and we talked about how, you know, animals are using that as a habitat. They're building things with it. I mean, I don't know. I haven't seen a beaver recently, but I also have three German Shepherds, so they probably don't like to come on my property. So, yeah, I mean, we are certainly not planning to go and do any, anything that would be against the ridgeline protection. You know, my husband and I are very much on board with that. And we can certainly do some bare root plantings. That area right there, Shannon, that's the kind of the the corner of Bill Bronson's property, and it's F L T. We did have a conversation with Bill Bronson, our neighbor, and he was like, you know, I didn't even notice. I don't even care, whatever. It's fine. Kind of a thing. What we had proposed to do in that specific area when I was walking with Kate and the rest of the F L T was that we would clean that area up and plant some mountain laurel cedar or something. And then we also discussed doing some, trying to do some hardwood planting. I know F L T was hoping to have like a 15 gallon, but there's really, there's not a way to get a 15 gallon tree down the ridgeline. Get so, like, it's just, so we had proposed to do some bare roots. There was a pine tree. Shannon, do you have that side by side?
I do.
It was 17 and.
I've got this.
So you can, there's, there's a picture that'll come up that'll show. There is one little, an evergreen tree. You know, I know in the picture, of course, it looks like that it's fine, but it's, of course, hard to say. But there's a lot of, and I know that there's sort of discussion back and forth about whether or not sumac is considered invasive or not. I can tell you from walking around today, it's pretty invasive. It was pretty much everywhere. And I know that Joe remarked that, you know, the things that he was taking down. I do remember, you know, the undersides of things, the lower part of things were definitely dying off. And so I think in one of my notes, Shannon, that I wrote to you, it was about, you know, trying to clear, not clear cut, but just clear some of the invasive stuff out in order to then give some new hardwood or some new native trees an opportunity for success and for growth. So we agreed that we would, you know, kind of make an area, and that area behind Bill Bronson's house, you know, that is F L T land. We would put that, we would also be kind of upper, you know, it's like right on the edge of where the rock wall is. So that's what we were proposing. Did I cover everything?
Thank you. Thoughts on quantity and type of tree? I know you touched a little bit on types. You said maybe.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so we said cedar, mountain laurel, evergreen, and, you know, kind of a mix of hardwoods in there. But again, due to the conditions and the location where the plantings would occur, it would be, we also thought about planting more than what was suggested because there's just stuff that may not make it with the invasive things that are there that are going to choke them out. And also just that, you know, we can bring a bucket of soil and, you know, dump it there and then plant a bare root in there. And we can do everything we possibly can to try and get it to grow. But at the same time, as I took some pictures, you know, we had, Joe did not, as I said, cut things down to the roots, and there's a ton of sprout growth that's already coming. I mean, it might be a few years before we see, you know, a big tall oak tree in there again, but they're coming back.
I think that touched on everything from an application.
Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to the Commissioners for questions at this.
Do I stay?
Yeah, please. Yeah. Matt?
This is a tough one. So you're you're basically saying that it's not going to be able to be replaced, a one-for-one replacement, right? It's just, it's impossible at this time to, to put back what was cut down?
Well, and quite honestly, if you were to look at some of the things that were down, you know, it's, we're not 100% sure that it fully meets the definition of a tree. You know, there were some things that were dead or dying. There were a few ash trees that had the emerald ash borer, and so I know Joe did take those down. I'm not going to plant another ash tree. You know, that's a terrible idea in Connecticut. So, um, yeah, I don't know one for one, but again, we talked about planting more than what was suggested in order to try and, you know, it's sort of like inviting 100 people to your party, so maybe 10 will show up.
Right.
You know?
Yeah. It's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to solve, right?
Yeah.
They've kind of grown organically over the years, so starting fresh is always a challenge. Yeah, I don't really have any more questions.
Kathy, how, how big of an area are we talking? Like, feet-wise?
Yeah, I think, Shannon, you had said you had a measurement.
I I have estimated somewhere between 45 and 6,000 square feet, about 4,500 and 6,000 square feet.
6,000, okay. That's going down the impoundment?
Correct.
Like, do we have a width or just like?
So.
I'm just trying to mentally, like visually picture this.
Okay. Mr. Chair, may I? Can we go to the near map? I think perhaps to answer some of these questions.
Absolutely.
All right, Garrett is going to drive at this point, and then I'll, Garrett will use the mouse on the screen, but I'll point on the screen.
Okay. So you've, you've got technology in Farmington with the near map application to have side-by-side areas. So on the, as we're looking at it, on the right is 2024, and on the left is 2017. So what we started to do is take a look at shadows and shadow lengths. So and so for frame of reference, Braga's, we're just the property in 20, because November.
2020. Yep, November 2020. Yeah.
So 2017 predates, right? And the, the point is, is to try to understand for us, the historic pattern of what vegetation had been there. And you can see the shadow pattern. So in both cases, these, you can see the shadow on the house on the roof line is to the right-hand side. So the shadow, the tree shadows are also to the right in both frames of the picture. And for us, what was evident is from the stone wall back to the first white line. Just, you know, can I go back to that original? Thanks. The stone wall to the white line, which is the Braga property line. So this, the, this initial here white line, Garrett, if you can highlight so it shows up on the screen, the video, is the Braga property line. This tree here beyond is the land that had been part of the original needed to the Farmington Land Trust back in 2010. And then this little triangle here on the corner is 31 Prattling Pond, the neighborhood immediately to the south of Braga's. So for us, what became evident is there's no substantial, clearly there's some type of brush vegetation here, but you can see the tall trees and the shadow lines. So Garrett, can I get, can you do a measurement for us from the stone wall to the property line and then the stone wall to pick the base of any one of these trees?
Roughly 135 feet.
Okay, so we have 80 feet-ish roughly from the stone wall to the property line and 130-ish feet to this particular tree. And you can see it's getting picked up in both. So both screens are showing that same measurement. Do one more for me. Pick one of these trees up here. It doesn't really, sorry.
I've not seen that much of a difference from 17.
Area right there. Right, it's right here.
So come out a little bit for me, please. Okay, so you can see all of the shadows. You can see the shadows up here for the tall substantive. Well, I'm saying a substantive tree, right? So something that's going to be big enough that is going to big diameter and tall enough that it's actually going to cast a shadow. You can tell clearly this is kind of a lawn-ish area. Certainly, in other photos, this near map does photos both in the early spring prior to leaves being out. And then again, we're typically getting photos in the August, September timeframe when everything is leafed out. So you're seeing something distinctly different. So advance just one photo for me. All right, advance another, sorry, August. Okay, so even here, it looks like that's, so from a plan view, sure, it's fully vegetated and it's fully green. But now go, go just one, go to March of 2018. Let's go back to the same, the same type of vegetation elevation. So, so from a distance standpoint and an area standpoint, I think we had taken, we had done roughly an area in, in, in here. Mr. Canto, with, trying to understand where work had taken place. The other thing that had come up was a concern that work had taken place perhaps on 31 Prattling Pond. To the best I can determine, if there was, again, doing the side-by-side comparison, we've gone through and counted, we counted the trees, again, using the shadows, counted the trees, and there's 10 or 12 trees here in this view, and there's 10 or 12 trees in the 2024 view.
Okay.
Whether or not understory material was removed, perhaps. I'm not going to say that it wasn't. And certainly from the photos, there was cutting of vegetative growth that had come up. So, so we've got that for now, and I'm going to leave that, and we'll go back to other questions, and then if there's further.
All right.
Further need to walk through some more of that, we certainly can.
Okay. So, and it was just to get a visual. So you guys are pretty much done clearing?
It was never our intention to clear anything. It was really, again, as I said, it was a very slow season. We did not want to lose guys. You know, tree guys are hard to come by. And so we wanted to keep them busy, keep them employed. And so it was pretty messy because there had been no cleanup. And so we went in and just did some what Joe deemed as cleanup, and it was, again, unintentionally. You know.
That's what I meant by clear, like even the dead stuff that was laying down. You pulled all that out. You're done with all that.
Well, we did not pull the debt. Well, we, so when he cut, and as you saw in the pictures that Shannon showed earlier from the F L T, there, there was brush that was laid, that was left there, laying there. And again, it was because we did not want to disturb anything by trying to pull all of that out. And now that is being absorbed and is, you know, creating new growth. And, you know, the beavers are taking it to make houses.
Gotcha. Okay, so now everything that you showed in green is what's growing and what you saw grow.
That literally was a picture at 5:30 today. Yes.
Okay. All right, so basically the hope is that it's going to get back to a nice big lush green thing.
Oh, it's, I mean, it's pretty lush, as you can see. I had a difficult time traversing down. But it's, you know, again, if it's about the native trees that, you know, we're interested in or the hardwoods, again, you can see the maple tree that's growing and the things that are re-sprouting. As I said, I know for sure there were at least two ash trees that he took down. And again, as tree people, it had the borer.
Yeah.
And it was just gonna, yeah. So, you know, and that's where, you know, we, we're, we are not looking to be contentious or cranky. We want to make things right, but we also want to be reasonable in what it is because I think that, you know, it's kind of a waste of time and money to go and, you know, dump buckets of soil that, you know, I mean, I can plant as many bare root trees as you want me to. But then what's the reality of what is actually going to take? And I don't know. I mean, this is all coming off the top of my head now. I, I mean, I don't know. Do we wait and come back here in another season and say, okay, now that, you know, green is going away? Now, do we, do we come back at a season when things aren't green anymore and go, okay, so what, what do we really have going on here? You know, what has regrown? What has re-sprouted? You know, I don't know. Again, I know it would make the F L T really happy for us to do something up on that spot by Bronson's house. We're totally fine to do that. Listen, we'll do whatever you want us to. Just, you know, I mean.
I'm just thinking, you know, seeing all that green, like you said, does it make sense to plant something and then it get choked out and it's wasted money?
Right. And then we would, then we also have to go in, and Shannon and I talked a lot about going in and kind of, we'd have to selectively prune out some of that invasive. And then you run the risk, right, of, you know, in selective pruning, you know, sometimes you're going to break an egg making that cake because, you know, if you're cutting something, if you're dragging brush, if you're, you may damage something else. So I, I don't, I don't know what the right solution is, but, you know, we are happy to entertain whatever you suggest.
All right, so it sounds like you're, you're, you're working with us.
Yeah, 100%. And again, the delay in time certainly was not an intentional of like, I'm going to drag my feet because maybe this will just go away. It was an intentional, I would really like to see what happens with nature and let it take its course a little bit. And, you know, you can see that it certainly has.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good. Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. Braga, for coming and, of course, for cooperating with the town. I appreciate it. I, I don't see this case as a complex case. With all due respect to my commissioner, fellow commissioner here, and, you know, it was, as, as you mentioned, it was a clearing of dead or half-dead trees, right? And Mother Nature is, you know, takes care of things, and sometimes actually logging is good for, for the wildlife. You know, deer-like areas that have been logged and and off of what Commissioner Canto said, he mentioned a great point. At this point, is it even worth planting trees? Because if it's lush, then if it's, Mother Nature has taken the course, as you said, and has brought back, you know, a lot of things in, in place of the dead bodies or dead, half-dead trees that were taken, is it, is it really worth? That's my question. I don't know who's capable of answering my question, Shannon, maybe the town. But, yeah, so I'm, I'd be curious to know whether it's worth putting the effort to, to plant. Yeah, that's, that's all I have to say, but thank you for being here.
I'd like, Mr. Chair, I'd like to refrain from comment till the end, if that's okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. Liz?
Okay, thanks for coming in. This is a question for you, Shannon. Just what's the grade? I mean, what, how steep of a ridge area is?
So by definition, the ridge is two to one. So, no, it's, yeah.
Oh, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm so curious.
It's like this. I was on it today.
It's a two, it's a two-to-one slope for a minimum of 50 feet. So it's very, it's very.
I didn't realize it was that much.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it, it, it has to meet a specific topographic definition in order to qualify.
Okay.
And you're going to be so happy you asked this question. Trap rock ridgeline means the line on Pinnacle Rock, Rattlesnake, Farmington Mountain, and Talcott Mountain created by all points at the top of a 50% or greater slope to horizontal for each one vertical unit of distance, so two to one, and is maintained for a distance of at least 50 horizontal feet measured perpendicular to the contours of the slope.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's very, it's
Steep?
It's quite steep and it's on the trap rock ridge.
Okay.
So it is, it is quite rocky. Really. You, you can't walk from it really straight out of Braga's. You've got to come down at an angle. You have to head south and then a little west and hook back up north to get in there, or you start really off of Mountain Spring Road, off of the Land Trust property and traverse up through the Land Trust property. There's a whole walk area off of the, their 20 Mountains, not 20, 12 Mountain Spring property.
Okay, Clatter Ridge? Is that the Clatter Ridge Trail?
No, no, that's further north. This is, this is, this is right off, it's, one of the properties right as you turn off of Route 4.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, let's see. So we've used the word invasive, and I, I know there are qualifications of what is truly an invasive species, and I love to see the green and Mother Nature does bounce back, but I do also understand that invasives are the world's biggest opportunists. And that sort of nice open field, because they grow early and they grow aggressively. And, and I know this is where we differ a little. I, I appreciate that, yes, it's green and lovely. But I also, you know, don't want to see Japanese knotweed and I can't name them all now, but like, the, all those things that get in and are hard to get out. And so I would love to see a little more of a concerted effort to plant specific trees. I'm, I'm thrilled that there are, that you were able to find, you know, hardwoods. I, I saw the maple and the oak leaves. That's great. That's a good sign. But I, I guess I hope we can work this out so that we get a real constructive plan.
I know when my husband said, one of the things that he did was a lot of sumac. And he kept using the word about the sumac being invasive. But of course, it's not on the Connecticut list of invasive, so there's a lot of sumac, which I don't know if you've been noticing, but I've been doing this standing here, like just thinking about where I was rolling around earlier. Um, so again, you know, there's, there's definitely a lot of sumac in there. It's not considered invasive, so like. So again, you know, there's, there's definitely a lot of sumac in there. It's not considered invasive. So like, yeah. You know, but there were definitely, and I don't, you know, I can make you a beautiful Excel spreadsheet. He is the tree guy. He can tell you, you know, what exactly things were. And, you know, I welcome anybody who would like to come down and we can all tra-, put on tall boots and, and come down and take a look. And, and, and see, you know, and make some suggestions. I mean, Shannon certainly has been there and F L T has been there a number of times. But we can have a little, you know, ridge line party if you'd like. I make really good cookies.
Good sales pitch. Okay, that's just the, I guess I just wanted to make sure that got heard. So I think that's the end of my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess a more question for you. How many trees were taken down? When we say, and when we say tree, like when we're talking about size circumference or do we know? Do we have a guess?
No. And that's just, so again, based on, on the photos and the ability to access. So we could not access that property similar to how we have some of the other properties where this has occurred in the last year to eighteen months. And based on our review of the aerials, there are no, there's one, there's a pine tree that's clearly evident that was taken, taken down. No, we don't have an inventory because it was impossible to do an inventory, in my opinion.
And there's not even a guess, like ten, five?
Again, they were all smaller. This, no. It, it's an area of disturbance. We've got.
How about height? We're looking at trees that were.
Significantly less than, again, so nothing that was casting a shadow. I'm back to the near map photos. Nothing that's casting a shadow. So that's, that's my, there, there's nothing of significance. So the photos that Garrett and I, Garrett just ran through, there's nothing in that entire area other than a pine tree that was notable. Garrett, will you bring up that?
So are you saying that there were trees that cast shadows and that we don't have trees that cast shadows?
You can't tell.
So that pine tree is the only, so here's from twenty eighteen. Bring me to twenty twenty one. So I've got the pine tree that's clearly visible here, clearly cut here. We've had that, we discussed that with Ms. Braga. Here's your edge of pine vegetative trees with a line. This is twenty twenty four. The shadows are casting. The shadows are casting out to the right. Twenty twenty, these shadows are casting to the left. But it's not casting in the same direction. But these trees are in the same location. So these, nothing in here from this edge to this edge is cast, it is any substantive material to cast any type of shadow. And this is the area in question. So this is the area from here to here that was cut of eight, eight to, maybe, maybe some of the sumac were ten feet, but it was all brush type material to the best that we've been able to determine. If there were a few that are slightly taller but spindly, that's entirely possible. But there's nothing, so all the way back to, let's go back to twenty seven. Okay, the two aerials basically, in my I feel these are very similar looking.
It's six years.
So they didn't own the property. They do, that was just before five months ago. But after we, the cutting that had taken place of the vegetation took place at the end of twenty twenty three. We met with them in January twenty four. And then working with Ms. Braga since, and her husband since January twenty four, there were surveys of property that needed to be done, blah, blah, blah. So this is where we, we are. So no, I do not have an inventory of the vegetative material that was removed in this area. There are stumps to count or measure.
You're saying there are stumps to count?
There are.
No stumps, sorry. Okay. Okay. All right. I guess I'm a little surprised too that I should talk to your lawyer, did your closing for not. This should have, I would think, would come up when you're purchasing the property that that this could be a problem for you. So they want to talk to that lawyer.
Well, I mean, but again, it was in the deed, it said that we had the ability. I mean, it was, I think you have that piece of paper. So it wasn't our deed, that was, that was what we knew. We had the verbal for Mary Dean. We had it in writing in the deed. Never.
Do we have a mechanism for letting people know when they're purchasing property on the ridge line that this is an area you got to watch out for?
It's recorded on the land records and it's debatable on title searches to whether or not it comes up.
Now, that's a problem.
But we don't have any other. So we send a letter every couple of years out to the owners of the bridge line. We send, we put notices in the quarterly newsletter and we put notices. We have the same issue with butlins. Butlins and, yeah, because it's not an easement on the property, it doesn't necessarily, and this is what we've heard after the fact from title companies and realtors, because it's not an easement. It doesn't necessarily show. So even though it's recorded on the land records, depending on the title company and what they're looking for, it doesn't necessarily show as an encumference on the property.
And what are we, when we're talking about replacement of things, and we're talking about bare roots versus, you know, five gallon? Do we have like a number that we've thought of? Have we come up with that?
I think Ms. Braga has proposed thirty to forty of those, a mixture of evergreen and hardwood. And that seems to be consistent. So when we go back to the Eli Road cutting that took place, which those were true, there were substantial stumps that were visible. And they were visible from the top looking down. They, they did bare root as well as part of their planting program. And regeneration and revegetation through the stump sprouts.
So did we have a plan, a recommended plan, or was it?
It was very similar to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, just an area and a quantity to be spaced out. So you're not going to get a, like a parking lot landscape plan that has, you know, three, three trees in the landscape island and so many fountain grass and so many day lilies. It's, it's going to have to be worked in throughout this. And my, my general sense is to create some planting areas to, so that they're somewhat concentrated. Because there is bittersweet, there is the sumac, there are other things there that if we, if it's scattered throughout, you can do planting areas throughout. But again, the suggestion is some groupings so that they can be maintained because these other, the vines, the sumac are going to have to be cut back to allow these to sprout and thrive. And it's going to take a few years for them to get established. Otherwise, the vines and other, other things that will naturalize in here could take over. And the same would go for the stump sprouts. Those stump sprouts should be, have a, like a perimeter, whether it's a two or three foot perimeter, cut out around them so they have the opportunity to take hold and sprout. But with the bare root, again, I, I don't know. A five or ten foot diameter, put in a, a few of them, kind of create a protective barrier around them. Go ten or twenty feet, do another five or ten foot circular area somewhat and do them in that fashion, rather than one here, one there, one here, one there, because you'll lose them, quite honestly.
Yeah. So do, I, I got, I see all this here. Do we have a specific plan that we're, like, when we eventually are going to vote? Is there a specific plan saying this is?
Staff is going to have to be there. There's no way. I don't think there's a practical way to get a, again, a planting plan like we would typically get a landscaping plan. I think we've got some general areas for replanting. We have a mix. And I think that's probably going to be our best bet. And staff is going to have to be there when they start, do a check in, a couple of check ins midway, and then be there at the end. And then one of the staff recommendations is annual reports for three years. Should the commission choose to agree with that.
All right, nothing else. Thanks. Thanks, Dave. Bruce? Okay, I think I'm, I'm, you know, after all the discussion, I'm pretty clear on, on where we are and how, how we got here. And I, I also appreciate that there's a climate of good intentions to, to move things forward. But I'm, I'm kind of in the same frame of mind that, that David is with respect to what we're being asked to look at tonight. Because really, all we're, we've got here is we're looking for a special permit for clear cutting and restoration. And that's pretty much all the detail that's there. And I understand, Shannon, from what you're saying, we can't get to a, you know, a site plan with plantings. But I think, I think we can get more than what we have. At least, you know, some of the things you were just mentioning when you, we were talking to Dave, I, I would like to see that write up. You know, in terms of, or the business case, or, or the methodology that we're going to use and what we're trying to achieve and the timeframe and plans. I, I, I would like to see more. I don't think that the commission has enough to work with tonight. I mean, I would certainly feel very uncomfortable approving this as is because there's really nothing there to sink your teeth into, into what's happening. So I would like to see some kind of write up that F L T buys into, that the town buys into, and, and Ms. Braga buys into. Right? We, let's take these good intentions and, and take it at least one more layer to, to where we are. Because I, I, I'm also concerned that I, I don't think there's enough there to go with. My two cents.
Can I make a statement about that?
Oh, it's the chair's.
Thank you. So because of the, obviously the slope, the, where things are, our intention was to buy the thirty to forty bare roots and then go in and find the best spots for them. So I, I'm not sure that having, being, drawing you a plan is really realistic in that we have to go in, see where's the best place to start to trim away some of that invasive, start to trim away the bittersweet, the vines, some of the sumac, to create a space to then do the planting. And we're not going to do that right now because it's too lush and too green still. So we need to wait a little bit and get into, you know, the middle of October. You know, middle to end of October, and then go in there, get that space cleaned, and then do the planting. And that was sort of in my brain how that was happening. That's why I said, we'll do the thirty to forty. You know, we can show you what we have. As Shannon said, staff would be present to see what we were doing. And then we would be agreeing kind of as we went, okay, here's where we're going to do this because this is a place that it's going to take or it has a better chance of taking. So without, again, I traipsed all around today trying to find spaces. And it's, you know, pretty close to impossible. So we do need to do some of the, you know, that's why we do need to have the proposal kind of accepted because we can't get in there to clear some stuff away, to make space to then put the stuff back. Does that make sense?
It does, but, but all the things you're just saying can be written down in a proposal and saying, hey, this is, this is what we're going to do. I mean, the thirty to forty only came up in the last five minutes.
No, it's a letter right there. I have a proposal right there. Yeah, it's right there. And I said, we're going to clear some of the, we're going to purchase the largest bare root trees that are available. And then mix, the mixture of, and then we were talking about also doing it sometime between September fifteenth and November first. And then I think there was somewhere else that we, that I talked about clearing some of the invasives to give the, you know, the natural native plants a chance. So I do have a plan.
Okay. All right. Kyla?
I don't really have too many questions, just based on everything that was said, but it, it's clear, it sounds like there might be even trees that are growing right now that you, you're not going to have a clear idea about until you kind of are able to get in there in a couple of months. Am I understanding that correctly?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyla. I have a couple of questions. So you mentioned planting more trees than requested. I think you mentioned that a couple of times.
I think when Shannon and I had talked, I mean, it was just, I think we had talked about maybe ten trees or something. And I said, well, then, you know, we'll plant double or more to give them an opportunity.
Okay. And what are those, the picture's gone, but the white Xs, are those areas for planting?
Yeah, so I did actually have a picture. It was a terrible, that was me, of my very limited skills. Suggesting that those would be the areas in which we would try and do a grouping. One of those areas, I think, was where the pine, that evergreen tree was. So we were talking about trying to, again, find a place to put an evergreen back.
Okay. And so, and maybe this is for you, Shannon. Is the plan now a combination? I didn't want to be part of it. That's okay.
Give me up, Scotty.
As long as it wasn't me, I feel better about it now. So the plan essentially is what was written on the screen before at those Xs plus now looking at where these seedlings are coming up and trying to preserve some of that as well? Am I understanding that right?
So this was all part of the application that was posted. Yes. So this is, this is, this, so this is all together. This is what was posted online. This is Ms. Braga's application or narrative and the plan that went with the narrative. So, yes, in addition to the thirty to forty bare root plants that are proposed, obviously, the stump sprouts of the hardwoods that are evident will be allowed will, will be in addition to, to this. So as you're looking at these photos, I think we've gotten looks to be an oak leaf here, I think. There were a couple, that's definitely an oak. There were a few maples through the picture, so that's going to have to, and those are going to have to be identified and maybe flagged. So I could, there's nothing I have more than to put on a pair of boots and walk the hillside with Ms. Braga. We can flag, so those should be flagged because at the end of the day, come April, while the oaks hold their leaves longer. But come October, November, and the leaves are off, then you're not necessarily going to know which is which. So we can walk through and flag the noted hardwoods. And then, or in evergreens, if there's, you know, things that are recognizable. And flag them with survey flagging, maybe with pink or red, whatever.
Yep.
Radar survey van. And flag, and then when everything dies off, then we'll know where those locations are from the flagging so that we're certain of those. And then can do some selective removal of the other material so that the new plantings, some soil and new plantings could go in in the areas noted on our application. I'll answer your question.
It does. Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm good for right now. Anybody else have any questions before we open it to the public?
Who's, who's going to do all this planting?
We have a tree company and a landscaping company, so we would do that ourselves. Yeah. Yes, yes.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing. So if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against. Alright, well, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for or against this application. Can head up to the podium, please.
So there is the land, I believe there's land trust representatives, and they also had provided a PDF. So I know Mike is on Zoom, so do. I don't know. So I don't know what you folks, uh, decided, so.
Kate Grady Benson, thirty-two Mountain Road, Farmington. Um, I am representing the Farmington Land Trust. I'm the executive director of the Land Trust. And this particular, um, what we called an encroachment that happened on property that we are overseeing. Was identified by one of our stewards back in November, um, at which point you took a variety of photographs. Um, which some of them are here. We have quite a few that kind of show the degree of clear cutting that actually did happen. Um, and reported to Shannon and Garrett, and they responded immediately, came out. One of our biggest issues is the pitch there, uh, you know, getting down to really count trees. In fact, just recently with, I was with Kathy and, you know, it was, Kathy, you asked me, you know, well, which trees do you want us to replace? And I said, how, how are we even gonna find them at this point because of the invasive overgrowth, because it is invasive overgrowth? It's not trees growing up. There are stumps that are producing some life. But most of the, the, what's growing there is, are invasives because of the fact that it just got opened up. Um, sun hits it, that's what you're gonna get, to your point, Ms. Sanford. The, I will say that working with Kathy, she's been very open to working with us and, um, and trying to figure out a, a solution. Because of the fact that this deed was transferred. To the Braga family with that stipulation in place, um, the land trust agreed to this. When we were given the, the land back in the, in the day nineteen, twenty, I can't, ten, thank you. Um, today, we would not agree to that, um, because of, for a variety of reasons. Um, so our hands were pretty tied once we knew that that was the issue around trying to, to deal with an encroachment. But we knew that ridgeline, um, uh, was a huge issue. Um, and has been for a variety of properties in Farmington and actually throughout the country. Um, and so in looking at our photographs, we're seeing, you know, in the original protection act. You can't take down more than ten trees, uh, of a certain size. And there's more trees than ten. Um, taken down of that appropriate size, over four and a half feet, I believe. And, um, and I, I can't remember the, the diameter, but, um, it's either or. And, and then also the space cleared. Can't be more than a hundred square feet, um, and it's much more than that. So it is a ridgeline, uh, encroachment. And, um, I appreciate the fact that it's gonna be really hard to replant there. And, and clearing it, again, because of all the invasives that are in there now, uh, almost impossible. And yes, it does become habitat for animals and probably is already. Um, so we're not advocating for that. Um, up at that top area, the Bronson property, we are advocating for, uh, clearing that and planting the, the mountain laurel that we talked about or some other hardwood, um, species. Um, but, um, one of our concerns is continued cutting and pruning. Um, and so I know we've talked with the Bragas and, and we want to be good neighbors and they want to be good neighbors. And our objective now is to really keep an eye on the property. Um, and so we'll be working together on that. And, and we'd like to be involved, frankly, with. The replanting and where that's happening and what, what it looks like. Um, in order to make it be as successful as we can. I don't want it to just be where we're gonna put these, you know, uh, and then go away. Um, and I'm happy to hear that there's a plan for yearly, um, evaluation of the property. Uh, to see how they're doing. Um, I would ask actually that if it doesn't succeed, that there's a, an attempt at redoing that. And that it's not a one and done and oops, that's it. Um, because, you know, the ridgeline is super important to protect. Um, but we do appreciate your, your working with us. So I will say that. But, um, you know, as a, as a land trust, it's hard for us to keep our eye on every single property we have all the time. So when we see, you know, an encroachment happen, um, a lot of times it's, you know, whodunit. So there's a whodunit component to this, because there's another area to the left, if you're looking down the ridgeline to the left of this that was clear cut. We can't determine who did it. Um, and so we're always, you know, kind of hoping that our neighbors are, are gonna be keeping an eye out. So, um, thank you Kathy for agreeing to work with us and not. Obviously doing something like this again. Hopefully we'll get some growth in there. Um, but that, that's kind of the, the, the line, the trajectory for us as a land trust. And, you know, obviously the town is the one who really has to deal with the ridgeline protection piece of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Well, you can go ahead and ask it now, sure, while she's up here.
Oh yeah, sure. Uh, thank you so much for being here.
You're welcome.
Uh, good to see you. Um, so I, you mentioned that there were more, uh, more than ten trees taken down. Uh, I, I'm a little confused with, uh, what Shannon, uh, said. That the town doesn't know how many trees and what kind of trees were, were taken down.
Right.
So why is this disconnect between the town and the land trust? And where'd you get your information?
Right. So if you look at this, if, I wish we could blow these photographs up, because you can get a better sense. There's more than ten trees right there.
And do you know whether they, they, they were the ones taking it down, or maybe they were already down?
Like, based on photographs over time, that we've noted from when the, the property was purchased till now. That these were taken down during that, that time period when they had their workers on site. Um, right now you can't access it. You can't even find them. You can't see them. And that's, you know, because of time, time has really been a, a problem for us. Um, there's no way we can prove any of this right now. Quite honestly. I mean, we could go in there and ask that you remove all the invasives, but. Yeah, so if you just look at that photograph, it really gives you an indicator, you know, the, the pine tree that was taken down. The, the diameter of that was about two feet. Um, maybe one and a half feet. I do have a photograph of that. I have a variety of photographs, but. But this one just really gives you an indication of kind of the extent. And it, and it goes up the, the ridgeline. Um, and yeah, you know what? There's probably a lot of sumac in there. Um, and, and I would say that, you know, people could say that's an invasive, but it's actually not listed as an invasive in the state of Connecticut. So we can't say that. Um, but did that answer it?
Yes, thank you. And, and I, I have another question, because you were, um, proposing to. Um, you know, you were for the idea of putting a burden on them to, um, report to the town every year for three years or how, how many ever years.
Oh, no, no, that, yeah.
To give the town a, um, you know, status of, of how the trees are doing. So I just, I'm, I'm curious to know how far we wanna do that. And how, what kind of a burden we're gonna put, uh, we're gonna place on them to do that. Because again, it's, it's wilderness. It's, um, and as you said, time is an issue. And, um, I'm just interested to know how, um, when is enough for them to, let's say, okay, we did our part, we planted the trees that we needed to plant. I mean, half of them survived, half, you know, didn't survive. And okay, we're good. We did our part.
So, so I guess, let me get this straight. So you're asking me if. If it's a bur- well, I'm just gonna interpret what you said, that is it a burden for them to have to look on a yearly basis to see whether the trees are surviving?
Sure, it is a burden, yes.
I would suggest that it's a duty. So if the trees get planted by them. They should be monitoring the plants for their health. Because the reason for replanting them is to stabilize the ridgeline. There's a lot of reasons why you want a stable, a stable ridgeline. Particularly for the property below it. There's a property right below that. They could, they could start to have problems, um, with water. And so I would say that I don't think it's a burden for them to check on what they've already planted. They have a landscaping business. It's not a burden.
Sure, I, I get your point, but what if, uh, the trees die, all of them, they die every year? Is it their responsibility to now, uh, plant trees for like five consecutive years, just because?
That's a good question. Yeah. At what point do you cut bait, is what you're saying? Yeah. I don't know that. I don't know when the, the point is, the point of no return is where it's not gonna be successful. Because we have a, a permanently exposed ridgeline there. Um, I don't, I don't have the answer to that. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes. Any others?
I was gonna ask, any other questions for Kate while she's up here?
Sorry.
That's okay. Think we're good for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room that wants to comment on this application?
Anyone has called in online that would like to offer, uh, comment regarding the application for thirty-seven. And nine, four, eight, four, Praddling Pond Road, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. And you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. One more time, if anyone's called in to offer comment regarding thirty-seven and nine, four, or Praddling Pond Road. Please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom. Uh, Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Yeah.
So now comes the hard part, right? Now we've gotta figure out what we want to do here. So I guess, let's see where folks are at. Matt, where are you at at this?
So, is public comment closed?
I'm not ready to close it, because we may, and. Land trust or.
Yep. I just wanted to make sure you didn't forget.
I know, after the break, I get it. I appreciate that.
Alright, so where am I at? So I think it's, it's pretty, you know, rational. We need to do something to, to resolve this. I think that. The act is simple, correcting it's complicated, right? It's, it's a difficult thing to do down there. Um. I do think there should be some annual reporting. I do agree that it can't be a perpetual forever thing. There has to be some kind of, you know, stop on that. Um, but I am curious what the other commissioners think.
Thanks, Matt. Bob?
Um, yeah, to go along with what Matt's saying, I understand, you know, I think, um, I don't think this was done maliciously. I mean, like Kathy says, she had it in her deed that she can clear or, or clean the property. Uh, you know, I've been part of, my property's nowhere near that big. And every once in a while, you gotta go in and you gotta clear, clear dead trees and dead branches and, and keep things healthy. Um, so I can understand why they would do what they did. Um, did they go a little too far? Yeah, possibly. Oops. Um, but I understand the intent. Uh, and then I, I really like that she's working with the town. And there was a cease and desist, and they said, listen, we gotta fix this. Uh, I think the number that was thrown out was ten trees planted. She says, I'll plant thirty. Which is, you know, I understand, I, I like the logic she used earlier, where you invite a hundred people to a party to hope ten should well. So you're planting ten to forty trees, hoping that ten to fifteen grow, or thirty to forty trees, hoping ten to fifteen grow. Um, which would meet or exceed the ten that we had all agreed on. Um, I don't know, maybe I'm not looking at it correctly, but I had a hard time distinguishing from two thousand seventeen. To twenty twenty-four in the pictures of a drastic clear cut that we were like, whoa, that, you know, like that. Issue we had a few months back with the person that brought in all the fill. And you could definitely see the drastic change in the backyard where they brought in all that fill and you were, your eyes opened up. I had a hard time seeing the difference in the pictures. So can I see that? It was probably done as a, let's clear this up and make things clean. Yes. Um, do I see the need to approve the permit so that we can move a forward? Uh, because without approving the permit, they can't clear things up to get new trees planted in there. So I'm leaning towards, yes, let's approve this, let's clean it up, let's fix the, the mistake, if you will, and, and move on. Um, like Roja had pointed out, you know. She's gonna be on a three-year time period of monitoring it and reviewing back. When, with the three-year time period and already tripling what the town's asked her to put in. I think it's an undue burden to do more than that, but that's where I'm coming from.
Thanks, Bob. Roja.
Thanks. Uh, yes, I, I think, uh, this case is ready, in my opinion. Um, interestingly, I, I heard inconsistency in the town's statement with the land trust statement. And I don't, uh, I think the applicant has come forward with. A clear plan, very generous plan. Uh, they're offering to double the amount of trees that the town has offered them to plant. And so, uh, I, uh, think the. It, it seems like it's not worth the time and money to put, to drag the case and, you know, have them report back, uh, continuously. Forever to, to town. I think three years is, is a, is, in my opinion, is a lot. So I think. Uh, I, I would ask for a reduction in, in the, the reporting. So maybe after one year or two years, again, we're talking about wilderness. Uh, things can die, things can reproduce. And, um, uh, as they've already pointed out, the applicant has pointed out. That they, there is growth, uh, new trees. And maybe the land trust can, can go with them and the town can go and. And monitor, uh, and see what it has already, um, you know, what kind of trees have, have been. Um, you know, are, are growing. I mean, this is what life does, death and rebirth. Um, and I think we should not, um, make this overly complicated. And, um, yes, I am, uh, again, as, as I said, I, I would like to reduce the number of years for them to, to report back to town.
Thanks, Roja. Liz?
Okay. I just wanna say thanks for everyone for working together, solving the, trying to solve a problem rather than. Exacerbate it. Uh, I am all for it. I think the plan is logical. I think it is. Going to be a feet on the ground solution. But I am committed to at least to a three-year, um, monitoring. I, I think four trees to establish, to grow, to, to show growth. And, um, I, I think it's important. Um, and I think this is a kind of a question comment. I, I'm somewhat familiar with land trust, but there is the annual stewards are supposed to be annually visiting their properties. So if this is taking place on the property, if the steward has their hiking gear and can get in there. And check things out, then that is an additional set of eyes, where it might be difficult for the homeowner. Maybe the, if the steward isn't experienced with this property, they can, again, work in harmony, work together. To ensure that, that monitoring is getting done. And, um, so I, I think this. Everyone, again, I'm not painting unicorns and rainbows, but we work together. And, and because both organizations, but the people, your, your lovely residents and the organization. Can, we don't have to duplicate each other's work, but we can work in harmony. Sorry, I won't sing kumbaya. But I think we can move forward on this solution. And, but I am committed to the, the three years of reporting.
So, yeah, I guess, also we're looking at the top view, and I don't know what the, the impact has been on the, the side view. Or down the, down the valley area. Is there any impact on view there? Is this on the side of a hill that we're looking at, like when you're down?
Correct. So if I go to.
Has that been drastically changed?
And again, in my opinion, no, because we've stood and looked. So we've done the reverse and stood from Braga's. Property and looked out, and we've got photos. Um, from Braga's and it was. A challenge. I want this to go away.
You have to click got it?
Yeah, I don't want got it.
No, it just, no, that will go away if you do that. It means you understand Chrome is working.
He's the technology teacher.
So. Braga's property is Praddling Pond. I gotta get the right property here. Here's thirty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
So there is very standing in their backyard. There is very limited view, and I've got, I don't have them with me, but we were looking at photos. There's. Um, I wanna say it was eleven. Yeah, it was Corvitz. If you can see the second floor of the Corvitz house.
Okay.
You, you really hard pressed to be along Mountain Spring Road and look up and see. And I, I did do the reverse. I did drive it, but we've stood up here and taken the photos out. Again, because historically, that hasn't changed since two thousand seventeen. You're not, I can go, we went to street view. We, we did street view and you can look up. I've driven it and you can look up. I'm sure there are portions where you can stand and see a roof line or a, a something. I'm not going to sit here and say you can't see it at all. But I don't think, again, having looked and gone back in the aerials, I don't think the vegetation that was removed changes what anyone is seeing from Mountain Spring Road or Waterville Road or the golf course.
Okay. And I guess I would concur with Liz that, you know, I think we want to make sure it's a number of years to make sure things are established that, you know, I would hate to just say, oh, after a year, oh, they died. Too bad. You know, and, and I'm hoping you're gonna think the same because it's, it will impact other people down the, uh, on the other side of the ridge. You know, we're talking about water. We're talking about, you know, just, just good, being good steward of, of the land. So I was actually gonna think five years, but I'll go with three.
Thanks, Dave. Bruce?
Um, I, I think I understand better now why the, um, restoration plan needs to be dynamic and, and flexible because of the circumstance. But I also too then think that the three-year monitoring becomes essential because of that. You know, a dynamic and flexible plan that needs to, um, needs to be able to bob and weave as the circumstances of nature, uh, affect it. So, uh, I also feel strongly that the three-year monitoring needs to be in place, uh, supporting it as we move forward.
And do we have a what-if, I guess? So after year one or year two, everything died?
No, there'll be replant. I mean, you can add that in, uh, absolutely. So you can add, add that in. That a replanting is expected, but I think a reasonable, I'm trying to go back, some of even the wetland restoration plantings, it's done with the intent that there's somewhere between an eighty, seventy to eighty percent success rate. So the plantings again are done in abundance, understanding that twenty to thirty percent aren't going to make it. And that the rest then thrive and the ones that didn't make it become the, uh, fertilizer for the ones that did. So, um, so that's, you, you're not, a, a hundred percent would not be a reasonable benchmark.
Right.
For this. Um, but I think with the visual and photographic reporting, um, for three years would probably start to give us a sense of what we're looking at.
Are you saying that the metric should be percentage survival of plants like those?
Correct.
So we should.
I'd suggest, I, I, no less than fifty would probably be with the idea being we're getting to seventy to eighty percent. But if it's at any time that it's less than fifty, then a replanting would be warranted. Would be my, just tossing that out for discussion purposes and start to tinker. And again, just trying to use a reasonable benchmark too, that we can even track. So, um, this is gonna be, I, I've got a few, I've added a few notes that I'll from a, an implementation standpoint to work with Ms. Braga so that we can really try to track this.
Good.
Awesome.
Kyla?
Um, yeah, I have a lot of respect for everybody's opinions here and what everybody has said. I, I guess I'd just like to make my own comment just from everything that I have kind of heard here. To me, it kind of sounds like we can't really even verify how many trees were actually cut down. It sounds like a lot of them were possibly, uh, dead in the first place. And um, it, it just seems like a lot of burden on the property owner who, you know, it, it kind of seemed like we had a shortfall in our, our own system of, you know, notifying these property owners, making sure that they're aware. It sounds like there's a disconnect with the title company, maybe the town and, um, you know, the trust kind of going out there yearly and making sure they're, they're notified when a new owner takes place. Um, and so I guess I, I'd kind of like to understand. So if we, if they don't, if they plant thirty trees, which it sounds like they're more than capable and very skilled at being able to do this, but on the ridgeline, it sounds like, you know, for those to survive, um, that we're, we're kind of thinking that only a percentage of them are going to live. I mean, what, what kind of burden does the property owner really have when we can't even verify ten trees were cut down in the first place? Um, and, you know, could we put something in there? Because it sounded like there's a couple maples and, and other trees growing. Could, could they have those, the trees that are flourishing now, count towards that, that, you know, fifteen number, these numbers that are kind of being thrown out there? Almost as a credit towards, uh, you know, the, this, this regrowth. It just, it just seems, you know, very costly possibly for the owner. If we revisit this in three years and all the trees died. And I, I do think that they're very capable of planting, but it sounds like nature might not be on their side with it. I guess just to recap, it's, you know, we couldn't really verify how many trees were really cut down to kind of narrow that down to put a burden on the property owner for how many trees specifically need to regrow. And if we are going to deem that a number of like fifteen or ten that we want to see grow, um, can, you know, the land trust and the town kind of work with this property owner and say, okay, well, you, you have five trees that were recognizing are growing, regrowing now. And have that kind of count towards the, this, uh, because it sounds like she's really trying to work, you know, with, um, everybody who's communicating with her. Obviously this, you know, as soon as she got the cease and desist, she completely stopped, you know, anything that was going on there. Um, I understand that the property owner below might have an impact, but we don't really know what that, that impact was. Was there even fifteen trees preventing, you know, water from going down there in the first place? Um, I guess that's kind of my comment. So I, I don't know how to incorporate all of that into this decision. Um, but, um, I guess that's, those are just my thoughts.
Appreciate that, Kyla. Thank you. Did you want to respond at all, Shannon, or?
I just, I think the, the stump sprouts, i- if the commissions agree about the stump sprouts could be incorporated into that percent survivability. I think the annual report is going to help with that. So we'll flag the stump sprouts now. And then do the planting, um, whatever, mid, mid October, early November. Get that, those areas flagged and protected. And then have to revisit them again. Um, it'll be a couple of times in the growing season next year to push back the impeding vegetation around those growth areas. So, and then it's going to be monitoring the annual reports. And I don't think the whole purpose of the annual report is that we don't get to year three and go, okay, now what?
Right.
That's the whole point of this is that we can have a reasonable conversation in year one, in year two. And if a, something needs to be changed or altered, there's an opportunity to do that in year one, in year two.
Thank you.
My two cents.
So I'm gonna start off with a question for you before I get to my thoughts on this. What does that annual report look like? Like we, we've thrown around, everybody's referenced it, but what, what would that entail for the Bragas to, to annually report back?
Sure. Um, what I would envision is, uh, either them, if they are going to do this themselves, that they set up a meeting with town staff so that we are there with them to walk the property and take a look to see and go through. So that's, everything's gonna have to be flagged or fenced off. I'm, I'm thinking the, um, the bare root plants, we might need a little bit of fencing uh, around them initially for a few years in order to provide some protection. Um, and go and see, and we're gonna have to do this in August or September when leaves are still on the, the trees for the, certainly for the deciduous species to ensure that there is, we have, see what's there. Do, do photographs, see if everything's still leafed out. Make sure that it's not all completely overgrown. If there's corrective measures that need to be taken. So most of it's gonna be a walkthrough with photographic evidence of, and use the benchmark of the planting. So there'll have to be photographic evidence of the planting. And then photographic evidence at year one, two, and three. And I'm suggesting that town staff would have to be there with them because you lose your frame of reference, right? You're gonna lose, it's gonna be very challenging, um, there and you'll lose your frame of reference. So that's, that's what I'm envisioning. So between, probably mostly photograph, but kind of side by side and saying, you know, planting area one at the time of planting, planting area one, twenty twenty-five. And to the extent then that corrective measures need to be made, a discussion regarding what those are.
Okay. Can I, can I just, not to cut you off?
No, no.
What, because I know you guys aren't billy goats and I don't want you to. What's the safety? Like, how easy is that gonna be for you guys?
It's not, because we haven't gone down. So that's the.
That's what I was just thinking. I'm like, how hard is that gonna be?
So a, a, and even if it's the Bragas crew are there and they're taking photos, I think it's still beneficial, even if we're looking at it from up on top. Or like I said, we're gonna have to come up from it underneath and, and get down.
Okay.
So, yes, it's.
Okay. Sorry about that, Scott. I was just, it just popped into my head.
Got a big crane, you know, just.
I do.
Dangle them.
Probably.
So how do we do this?
Well, hang on, I want to share something. Bobby wouldn't let me finish. No, you know.
Sorry about that.
So.
Goes.
No, I left public comment open if you, if there's something you want to. Please.
So I understand, um, Ms. Zimmerman, I believe is the name who's on the Zoom, is concerned about the duty um, put on the Bragas around planting the trees and wanting to count the ones that are leafing out. I, I would love to request that, however many that is, that they're added to the assessment because we're not sure they're gonna live. So yes, they do have some initial growth, but we're not sure they're actually gonna make it to what size we would love to see them at, which is a full grown tree. So if they could be added to that assessment group, that, that, I just wanted to just toss that in there so that they're not just, okay, they're fine. Nature's taken over. Nature is different now, just so you know. Uh, we have a lot of changes in the, in the environment here. And we have a huge invasive problem in this town. Um, and throughout the state, actually throughout the country. So whether or not those trees will survive once they've been cut and we've introduced the potential for illness to the tree, we don't know yet. So if, if they could be part of that assessment, that'd be great. Thanks.
All right, everybody's on pins and needles, right? From my opinion now? Really? I'm sure not. Um, I too, like others have mentioned, appreciate the collegiality in the conversation. That's not always the case in these kinds of situations. So much appreciated to all the parties for that. I guess the thing I'm most focused on is the, the three years of sort of checking in and taking pictures and such. In my opinion, it's not a burden because this was a ridgeline violation, intentional or not. There was still a violation and I think there's some responsibility on the property owner now to do what it takes to, and I'm not saying that you're not willing to do that, but do what makes it right. And so I, I feel very strongly that that three-year um, check-in should, should stay in place. Um, I do like the idea that we somehow count in those stump sprouts, is that what we're calling them? I feel like I'm becoming an arborist as we're talking tonight. Um, we're counting, not that much of an arborist. Um, but, um, I, I think we count those in somehow. I'm not sure what the right answer is there, but, um, again, I appreciate your willingness to, to plant some trees and do what we can to make it right. I think, Matt, you started by saying like, it's easy to create sort of the situation that's almost impossible to totally fix it. But I think we're doing what we can, at least with the conversation so far.
I would like to make a statement.
Sure.
This is true.
Of course.
Uh, I, I think, uh, we are putting responsibility on them. Uh, the, the mere fact that we're asking them to, to, uh, plant trees on a ridgeline is a, is a burden that we're placing on them. And then that, you know, something that we all agree that that needs to be happen. Uh, so that, that's my statement. And I also had a, I had a question from Ms. Braga, if, if you don't mind coming to it. I would like to know how much it'll cost your husband or your company to, um, to plant these trees? And how, how, um, many hours that'll take?
Uh, it's, it's really, it's hard to say. I mean, obviously we can get something at wholesale, not retail. So, um, you know, it would cost me less than what it would cost, you know, the gentleman on Eli that had the same issue. Um, you know, I'm gonna pay my crew, um, that day and I'm not gonna make any money to pay the crew. It's gonna come, you know, it's payroll. Um, so yeah, I mean, that, that certainly would be a cost. But again, the cost to me to pay their payroll and to buy plants at wholesale versus retail is still less than what somebody who doesn't own a tree or a landscaping company would have to incur. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. So you are in, in, incurring costs and, uh,
Uh, yeah, I mean, for sure. Yeah, I mean, the, the, any of the crews that are going to be there would be out normally on a job making the company money. This is gonna cost us money because there's no, there's expense, but no revenue. So yes, there's certainly an expense incurred. Um, but it is less than if I were just a regular person without a tree company.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So.
We have, uh, one more.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see the hand. Thank you.
Hi, Francie Brown Holmes, um, one twenty-six Main Street. Um, I'm talking in behalf of the Farmington Land Trust also. I just wanted to refer to Kate's comment she had said earlier about the request for the land trust to be involved in the planting part. Um, so when somebody was talking about, well, the town would, that the staff would come out and meet with you and the planting. So if there's a way that the steward or part of the land trust could be part of that, that would be my request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I certainly appreciate the Farmington Land Trust's, um, desire to be a part of the whole process. Um, but I also just want to be sure that we are not confusing the area of the land trust where we did some stuff and then the ridgeline where it was still on my property. So I just want to be sure that I absolutely said, we'll do at the top part of the Bronson, um, Bronson slash land. Actually, I think it's Bronson. I don't even, I'm not sure if that area is land trust or if it's Bronson. So, you know, I'm, I'm gonna go plant stuff on Bronson for the land trust. Um, so I just want to be sure that we are keeping the two separate yet together. Okay.
Fair enough.
Uh, again, Kate Grady-Manson, um, the reason that it's important for us to be involved in this evaluation is because we do steward that property. So our stewards are part of that property. Um, and we do look, you know, basically that's the, the exchange that happens when someone gets the tax benefit from getting an environmental easement with, you know, or, or giving land, either way. And this was a donation with stipulations around it. It's, we're still, you know, stewarding that land. So us being involved in this would be really important so that our people know what they're looking at when they're out there so that when things happen, because we're the ones that reported this to the town. Um, we actually, you know, we're unaware really of the subtleties of the deed at the moment, at, in that moment, found out very soon thereafter, of course. And so, yeah, our role in this piece of it is really more about, um, consulting, being part of the kind of record keeping. We took a lot of photos in the beginning, shared those with, uh, the town. Um, so if we could be involved in the, in the, the evaluations, that would be great. Thank you.
All right. So question, Shannon. This is one of those rare circumstances on this commission, I think, where we're not all on a hundred percent in agreement. That's okay. So do we throw a motion out with some conditions and vote? With some conditions and vote and just see how it goes? Is that the best way to proceed?
I, that would be my recommendation. And if you're ready, then you will close the hearing. But yeah, so yes, someone can make a motion.
Okay.
Doesn't, and then the motion can be amended. So you'd make a motion and second. Discuss it. And then based on that discussion, you can decide whether or not you want to amend the motion or not. Or go, go to vote.
Okay.
Okay, but there's the six of, so the six regular members are in attendance, six regular members will vote.
Right. And can we close the hearing now? I think we're probably in a place.
I think so. They ask one more question.
Yes.
So we have, we have a list of items for consideration. Have we answered all those? And one of the ones I'm asking about is the, the difference between using bare root trees versus the one inch caliper or five gallon planting containers. That wasn't, we've not discussed that at all.
We discussed it.
Well, that's up to, so I was, so this is things I wanted the commission to discuss and consider. So if you, if that's something rather than all bare root trees. Certainly, right, again, we're, we're at a two to one slope. So bringing in a two and a half, three inch caliber tree and a ten foot root ball. That's not going to work.
Yeah.
Clearly.
I'm not carrying it there.
So you're not getting it there. You're not, you can't stake it. It's going to roll down the hill. It's going to die. You're not, it's done. So.
We're saying that's, I just want to make sure.
So that's not, so that's not practical, but something is a half inch or, or one inch caliper or a five gallon. Practical for a small percentage. To see if something of that size, something larger than bare root, but smaller than what we would usually have for a planting plan. Work for a limited percentage of the trees. And give them a little bit more
discount.
Life.
Little head start.
A little better head start than just the bare root, but not so much head start that they can't figure out their way into the rocky crevices and soil. I was throwing that out so for you to discuss. Perhaps Ms. Braga has a comment on it or not. I have no idea. So that was just a so all of these are really, these are points that, things that I've thought of as I'm typing this up that I need all you, you'd get it out there. And if there's other things, then get it out.
That's why I'm getting it.
Do it now. Yep.
So I think in regards to, you know, something in a pot, something that actually has some already some growth to it versus a bare root. I, I think in that area, like in the Bronson area, that's higher up, that's not, you know, falling over to the side. I think we can find a couple of areas that maybe we could plant a few of those. And again, I think if, if you don't mind having some fluidity to the plan. Because again, once we start walking, once we start going, oh, hey, look, this is a little flat area right here. We can move these rocks mid and maybe we can get something that, you know, goes there. We can bring something in. You know, there are certainly some spots that we might be able to do that. And you know, as long as you're okay with it being a little bit fluid. You know, again, we just want to make it right. In the best way possible for growth, for habitat, for nature, for FLT, for the ridgeline.
And I guess why I'll have you there. It says, you know, one of the recommendations that it'd be dubbed by November fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Is this doable?
Well, I have to say I'm going to be very busy from October second until October, like seventeenth. Because my boy is graduating from boot camp in Paris Island in the Marine Corps. So no, I'm not doing anything besides literally just hugging my child from October second to when he flies back to Geiger on October fifteenth. So after that, I'm all yours.
What's saying November fifteenth?
Yeah.
Asking isn't.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, in theory it is. Again, it's going to just be a matter of, you know, getting guys down there. And starting, I don't know how, again, beautiful Excel spreadsheet, shaded colored formulas, not so much in the how long it's going to take to actually, you know, clear an area, figure out the right area. So, you know, we're going to have to get together with the town, get out there, figure out where we think it's appropriate. And then get my guys to come in, make the space available, get the plants in, put them in. And, you know, put some little chicken wire fencing around them to give them the opportunity that, you know, the invasives don't come in and and take over. But I, and I don't know enough about invasives. Are they going to go dormant? You know, in November. So, you know, I mean, we could deep root fertilize all these things that will sort of like a vitamin to take them kind of through the winter. You know, we do a lot of fall deep root fertilizations. So I would suggest, and I'm assuming that Joe would agree. That we deep root fertilize all the things that we're bringing in and, you know, placing around. So again, we're going to do everything that we possibly can that's within our, you know, wheelhouse to make sure that these things take. And again, I think that question of, so after the first year, yeah, I'm kind of a numbers person. So if I'm going to plant thirty, whether it be bare root or some containers. You know, what is the, what's my number? What do I need to, you know, really make sure that's growing? And I like the idea that the things that are already respouting, that those count into those numbers. So if I was originally going to plant forty and I find, you know, ten things that are sprouting, now I'm only going to plant thirty. So of that thirty now that we're planting, and I understand about making sure that those things, we're not just going to ignore them. We're going to make sure that those are also being well cared for. How many of the forty are we hoping? Because again, if it suggested that ten were cut down, so is that my number? Is ten my number? Because that was the original thought was ten. I said, well, well, forty then to be sure some, to be sure that the ten come back. So is the ultimate answer that I need to be sure that of my forty, that ten are successful?
All right, I'm just going to go on record. I don't know where the ten came from because we've been using area. We haven't been using a quantity. So we had an area based on what our, we had looked at.
I don't know where the ten, I thought the ten came from you.
I don't know where the ten came from. I think in the land trust presentation. It was something like clear cutting consists of ten trees or more, or that's it. But that's the only time I heard it ten brought up.
I did not, so.
But other than that.
I've let it go, but this has come up a few too many times. I don't, we've been looking at it from an area. We did not go and count.
Yeah, and if really, when you look at the photos, if you were to look at just the
Something we need to.
The shadows.
That are flying down. It was more than, so it's in, in this case, we used area as a quantifier, which I believe I quantified in my agenda review.
So, so, sorry. Excuse me. I feel like we're really diving into the details and everything about this is flexibility. Correct. Right? We could write out the highly detailed plan that's going to just fall to pieces the second you try to plant anything. Would it be better for us to just make a suggestion that, you know, it, you know, adheres to staff requirements or within staff, you know? Would that be within?
If you're agreeable with the plan presented, it should be as presented.
If we were to ask the applicant a few questions to capture all the conditions. And they agree, we could say as presented?
Or you can, you can say as presented and then itemize the, so it's her application as presented. And then it, the conditions, some of the conditions are questioned. So you're going to have to, you're right, make sure that there's concurrence on there. So that is, that is an opportunity to, to address it in that way with respect to the specific date. I would like a date in place. The purpose of it isn't that ideally, everything is done by November fifteenth. If we are making progress. Right? Then we go, okay, right? Or there was a heavy rain or a hurricane came in that we weren't expecting. Or we've got a graduation that is perhaps not thought of at the time that I put November fifteenth. Okay? We also know, because hey, it's New England and it's fun. We could have a couple of feet of snow at any given point in time, right? And not that it happens at Halloween on a regular basis, but it has happened. So we liked, I like to have a date also to the, so, and again, Ms. Braga and her husband have been responsive. But if whatever, all of a sudden I've got crickets, I've got something to work with. Right? To say, okay, now you're, we've, we've, we had an issue with the red line and now we're in violation of the application. And here we go, right? Nice cooperative Shannon goes out the window and we start having a whole different conversation. And I've got something to work with. So that's where the date starts to become important. Again, if we're making progress. Then I'm, we, we tend to use, we try to use some common sense with this and allow this to proceed with the intent really that this is being done before the ground is frozen this year. That's the whole point. So that's.
May I say something? So Shannon, I think based on what you're saying, we need to also be flexible with the date because it's New England. What if we have a snowstorm in October? Well, then we'll deal with it.
I mean, yeah, I mean, but even when we had the snowstorm in October, everything melted in three, whatever, a week. And then you could access everything.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it, we'll deal with these acts of God as they come. And if there needs to be flexibility, then we will work in the flexibility. Again, the purpose of the date is to ensure that it is very clear that the intent is to try to get this in the ground this year, complete. And that the communication stays open and there is a clear progress to yes, we're going to meet with Shannon. We're going to go flag all the stump sprouts. Yes, we're going to meet with Shannon and Garrett and we're going to go figure out where our areas of clearing are going to be because these are the pockets that we're going to plant in. And yes, we're going to, we've ordered the material. And hey, we're only getting half of it in, but half of it's delayed because Colorado had a snowstorm. Okay, well, we're going to plant the half that we got in. Really, it's the, the point of that is to make sure that
Yep.
We're going to keep this dialogue going. And if that dialogue stops. Again, then, then that's what I use as needed to, to take other actions.
Thank you.
I think Matt's right. I think we're looking too precise. Like I just thought of it, you know, while they were all talking and, you know, if we tell Ms. Brower, listen, you're going to go out and buy fifteen five gallon trees and you're going to plant them here, here and here. And she puts a shovel in the ground and there's ledge. We don't want blasting. Let's move. So it, it does have to be a little fluid. Yeah, I think that's completely right.
No, but if the commission wants some larger trees, I need to know that.
Right.
Right? So if it's a, hey, okay, we want to see ten to twenty percent of a one gallon, five or one inch caliper, five gallon. The parameter, right? So I need to know that there's at least that parameter is being considered as opposed to no, we're, we're fine. Do all bare root.
Bare root.
Okay.
Right.
I just need, if I'm going to be overseeing it, I just need some.
Yeah, you need some guidelines so you have some, something to follow.
Yes.
Yeah.
So do we, do, how do we feel about the bigger trees?
Dave's crafting something.
This composer.
Can I close the public hearing? For sure this time. Is there anything else that's like? I'm looking at you, Dave. Anything? Okay.
I think we still have discussing, discussion, almost the chair about the trees.
I think we can do it without public.
Yeah, the question is whether we can do it without public. Ms. Braga or the land trust.
Yeah, you can keep talking to me all you want.
Yeah, I feel like we've responded. Yeah, at this point. All right, I'm closing the public hearing. Dave, have you worked up something for us to start with over there?
Slowly working on conditions. So I've got Ms. Braga cooperating with town planners office and farming land trust and determining the mix of bare root and larger plants where possible. Planning, planting to be completed.
Kind of just stop you before you get too much. I think what Shannon was looking for was a percentage that we could at least target.
Possible really to get a percentage when you don't know.
So here's what I think I, I would, and, and this goes to Shannon because you've been out there, I haven't. So when we're talking about the five gallon and the one gallon pots, those are obviously hard to manhandle. Is there a spot where it's going to be safe to get them down there and actually plant them?
They can, and they can bring in additional soil.
Okay. Because that's going to be a key part too. You know, we don't want to say you're going to bring in fifteen and they can't get them down there.
Right. And that's why I'm saying it's really hard to say a percentage then.
We're talking somewhere between three to eight.
Right, right.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, ten to twenty percent gives me three to eight.
Eight trees, right.
Some of them may be up in that upper plateau area that she was talking about.
Okay.
Up here.
That's what I'm thinking. Yeah, that's.
Well, I like it from the perspective of sort of the test that we talked about, like, and they tell them after a year what worked and what didn't.
Correct.
Well, that's true because I like that, just because if one type dies out, but the other type has a better survivability, then we know, and we also have that understanding, but it's a it's a smaller specimen. Cluster to work with and monitor. So that was.
Maybe say with flexibility per staff. You know, decisions, all of that.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, like Shannon's saying, if you do twenty percent, that's six trees. If you have room for six trees, that gives you a good mix of
There we go.
Potted and bare root.
Okay.
To kind of just figure out which ones are growing.
I think Dave has it in the queue.
There, there, no, I'm, I'm kind of talking that way. So he writes it down, but honestly, fingers moving.
Leaf spout, oh no.
Stump sprout.
All right. I'm sorry, Bob. Can you, you want to tell me that again?
So that's what we're going with.
Did you want to tell me that again?
Oh, you weren't. We were thinking ten to fifteen percent be potted so that we have that experimental between the bare root and the pot to see which one grows, which one doesn't. And if we see one taking off better than the other, that's what you gear towards if something dies. You know, right? Wasn't that the idea?
Yep. And we can just leave it as simple as potted rather than specifying a size.
Right.
All right.
And I think that's.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, so I've got is Ms. Braga will cooperate with town planners office and Farmington Land Trust and determine location of a mix of bare root and larger plants up to ten to twenty percent. And ten to twenty percent larger plants where possible, planting to be completed this fall and later than November, do we say first? Fifteenth, okay, I have fifteenth written, but I saw somewhere else first. There will be a report on the health and condition of plantings annually for the next three years, report to be submitted by November first of each year for twenty twenty five, twenty five, twenty six and twenty twenty seven. This will include stump sprouts where applicable.
And do we have a minimum? Did you put a minimum in there? How many trees?
As presented, so it'll be her thirty to forty.
Yeah, but that's not the survival rate. What I'm saying is survival rates. What's the minimum survival rate we're going to have? Fifteen?
Fifty.
Half? Fifty percent?
Fifty, sixty.
And I think, you know, I don't know, again, we don't know where the ten number came from.
Yeah.
But she's willing to put down thirty to forty. So if we do fifty percent survival rate, that's fifteen trees. That's where my mind is.
All right. So we're saying survival, survival rate of what? Fifty percent of the. All right, anything else?
Uh, yes, the, I think we also had a discussion about whether the land was, they want to be involved. And the applicant requirement or? I don't know.
Yeah, I think that was mentioned in the beginning.
Land trust is party to the application. So any work on the land trust property would have to.
Right.
I mean, we'd have to inform them and they can let us know whether they want. Twenty-four hour, forty-eight hour.
I could all say a collaborative.
They're party to the applications. Any work on their property, they'd have to be.
Yeah.
All right. So maybe saying a collaborative reporting on the health.
Sure.
I like it. Anything else?
Read the whole thing.
Okay, so am I saying this, saying this, or am I just, we just going through it one more time?
Well, if he makes a motion and we don't second it, we can mess with it, right?
We can mess with it.
No, or we can amend it.
Right.
There we go. There we go.
Make the motion seconded, then open for amendments, then.
We can, or you can, you. You can do a draft. And informal is you all want it to be, but you can do a motion.
Okay.
You can, you can do a dry run.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a motion.
Cause if you.
In the weeds here and we're talking about plants and I don't want to be. All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we approve the application for a special permit. Made by Kathleen and Braga for clear cutting and restoration in the ridgeline protection area for properties located at thirty-seven and ninety-four eighty-four. Prattling Pond Road and already in an R E zone with the plan and conditions as presented, including. Ms. Braga will cooperate with the town planners office and Farmington Land Trust in determining the location. And planting mix, uh, planting of a mix of bare root. And uh, and a ten to twenty percent larger, one inch or five gallon plants where possible. And planting will be completed this fall, no later than November fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. A collaborative reporting on the health and condition of the plantings will be made annually for the next three years. Report to be submitted by November first of each year for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six and twenty seven, twenty-seven. This will include stump sprouts where applicable and we are looking for a survival rate percent of the replanted trees.
Seconded.
Ow. Discussion. That.
Uh, I think that captured everything.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah, the, um.
Try to hear some again.
No, the, the only thing I'm thinking is, um. Unless I, I misheard it, you, you said, um. Did you say specific planting? Cause I think that, that part needs to be fluid. The wherever the trail is going, needs to be fluid.
It was in colla, he said in collaboration.
Said.
Staff and.
Okay.
And uh, will, so Ms. Braga will cooperate with the town planners office and Farmington Land Trust in determining the location.
Okay, okay, in determining, okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. I just, I don't want to.
Yep.
Get him stuck into, like I said, hitting ledge and then what do I do now?
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, and determining the location for planting and the mix of bare root.
And potted.
And potted. Larger plants where possible.
Perfect. All right, we're good to vote?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I, um. Sorry, go ahead. Um, I, I approve the, the whole thing except the three year. I don't know how I should go about that.
I think that requires to vote nay against the motion.
It was, so you're either. So you're either approving or denying.
It's not a light.
It's an all or nothing.
Right.
So you're either approving or denying. So you're either going to say, okay, I don't agree with it, but I'm going to approve it because we're going to. Move this ahead or it can be a five-one vote.
Okay, then I.
All right, let's do it one more time, just to be, make sure we're clear, right? All those in favor?
Uh.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, our second public hearing.
Got that.
Ms. Braga, would you like to step up again?
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Braga from thirty-seven Prattling Pond Road. Oh, and I'm here because I'm going to build my mom a house.
Oh.
So, um, we have an existing. Um, we have an existing barn on our property uh, that Mary Jane built. Um, it could, get rid of that picture. So move past that other picture.
I did.
Um, it's an existing barn, um, and Mary Jane had this fabulous idea one day to say, hey. Would you ever think about converting that into a cottage for me? And I said, yes, I would. So I believe you should have the plans, right?
I do, so I'm just bringing, so. An aerial is sometimes a little easier. So how, so we're back to thirty-seven. House. Garage. And the barn up on the north side of the property.
That's well.
Okay, so then if I come back to.
She'd drive up our driveway past the house and it actually has a driveway all the way up to the top of it.
Yeah. So. That shows here. Um, a partial and there is a full, so this was all posted online and there's a full survey. So house, existing garage. Barn, it shows the setback and it shows the addition. Here on the uh, plan. So. You can go ahead and you can continue.
So the existing barn is uh, basically what you would think a barn kind of would look like, concrete floor, really great brownstone. And then there's almost like a feed room kind of in the back. Initially, we were just going to take the existing space and make no changes to the footprint. And just kind of renovate the inside. And then we met this fabulous architect who walked in and said, no. I don't like that plan. We're going to do this instead. And here it is. Um, so instead of, you know, kind of having her be in this very small space, there's an addition, if you can see to the far left, yeah, right there. So she actually would have um, a designated bedroom instead of stuffing her in.
So originally she would have been, this would have been her bedroom and her bathroom. And then her kitchen, living and dining would have been this space. So instead now she'll have a dedicated area bathroom with a full walk-in closet, washer, dryer, bathroom, walk-in shower. The kitchen is now where the um. Feed room is, if you will. And then she gets this whole space now for living and dining. So it becomes a much greater.
Space for her. There is a loft on the second floor. That would have been a hay loft. Um, and so we did propose, uh, so she actually. Still works for me full time. We call her Vito Knuckles. She's in collections. Um, she's quite good at her job. Um, and so she does uh, enjoy still. She also works as a consultant still uh, for some development properties or projects. Um, so we did propose having an office there on the second floor for her. Um, and yeah, it's a, it's a great. Super sweet little. Cottage for her and who does not want their mom to live on site with them. Even my husband's on board with the idea. We do have, um, we are working with uh, David Whitney uh, for, he's a septic engineer. In ADB Septic, it's ADB Construction. Um, and so they're designing this septic system. Um, because we will have to. In reviewing our sys, current system, so apparently. Anyway, in reviewing our current system, we determined that we were probably going to need to upgrade our system anyway. Just for our existing house, forget about adding Nana into that system. And so once we determined that, we said we are just going to do an entirely new system. So Nana's, and there is, I don't know, did David send you?
He sent me an email. I didn't include it in this.
Okay.
That's pretty.
It's a separate.
One of the, the requirements are, and we've had this before when we, we've looked at others that. Um. It, it needs Farmington Valley Health District approval and it's not getting anywhere in the building office until that comes in. It does, it does not pass go. So, um, it's fine to, to review this with the understanding that it, it absolutely will need the Farmington Valley sign off.
Yeah, I think, I'm, I mean, I think, any questions?
Matt? Well, I think this is, you know, absolutely in line with what the intention of this, this regulation was. I mean, this is a perfect example of that situation. I guess one question. Uh, was this already on the agenda or this just so happened to be the same day? Same question.
So, no, I mean, we have been kind of working through this for a while. Um, and yeah, my husband made us buy two new businesses in the spring and I work for, it's like stupid. I'm in retail now. It's crazy. So yeah, it just kind of got here.
Okay.
We're just doing everything at once.
Yeah.
So part of it was they needed the survey. So they were, they needed the survey. There were test pits being done with Mr. Whitney, Dave Whitney. Um, for the septic system and, and variety of things. Um, so the survey was needed. And so when we went out in June, I was just send it, just let's go. They rip the Band-Aid off, do it all. So that's, everything came in. And you may recall in July, we, when we were accepting these applications. We talked about, there's a, there's a third project, um, the pergola. They're, they're replacing the belt. There had been a pergola and they're going to put the deck balcony at the back. So it's all the same. It's all, so that one, because it was uh, basically a like for like-ish replacement, it didn't require a review. And this home is, or the barn is outside the hundred and fifty foot. Uh, ridgeline setback. So there was no, it's, it's at least a hundred and eighty, two hundred feet from the ridgeline. So that didn't require the ridgeline review. So those items were discussed in July when we accepted these applications. Um, so.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Kathy just likes talking to me every.
Yeah.
I do.
New besties.
No, old besties. We've been besties for a while.
I'm like Matt, I mean, this is textbook AD. I mean, really, I mean, if you wanted, th- this is what they were thinking of when they came out with it. So yeah, I don't see. You know, I, I'm happy. And it looks like a great project. I mean, beautiful building.
No questions.
Liz.
I agree. Nice, nice look. I think you're going to be very comfortable. Um, and uh, no, I, 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 it's a great use of. As I, I concur with my.
We have no questions.
Um, in general, I can concur with my colleagues. It's a beautiful project. Uh, just one quick one. Do you, do you have? Access for construction equipment to, you're going to need for that? Please tell me you won't have to cut any trees.
Like a shot.
So funny guy. Too soon? Um, no, you can actually drive uh, right up our driveway. Um, and as uh, Shannon showed you earlier with the aerial view of the house. So there's a spot, there's the, there's a attached two-car garage and then there's. A big driveway that goes up to the barn and then there's a detached garage. And not only can you go behind the garage with the construction equipment, but I mean, we had a big excavator to dig test pits and there was no problem to get in there.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Good luck with the project.
Kyle, any questions?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions either. It looks great. Um, I think we're ready for. A motion to second. Do we need to include those?
Public comment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, my.
Sorry.
I'm losing.
I know. But uh, so clearly there's no one else.
After nine o'clock.
To uh, offer comments. So I'll just uh, ask online if anyone has called in to offer comment on this application. Please raise your hand using the feature in the Zoom and there's nobody but us online, Mr. Chair. So. Thank you.
I knew all that. That's why I was just going to move past the.
Perfunctory request. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing that I never really did. Um, I'm closing the public hearing. Um, when we make a motion, Shannon, do we need to include those items, those operational items you listed in the agenda review or just as presented?
As noted in the agenda, item one is noted in the agenda. So as presented, including item one of the agenda review.
Perfect. Can we get a motion in a second, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application by Kathleen Braga. For special permit for detached accessory dwelling unit for property located at thirty-seven Prattling Pond Road, R eighty zone. As presented and. Uh, per item one in the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Enjoy it.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Apparently, yes. With boots.
Yeah, we're going to need tall boots. I got boots. Get out of here. Bye.
Planners report.
Yes, sir. Uh, we've got two items, planners report. We're going to do these hopefully quick and painless. Eight, three, eight, Farmington Avenue is our lovely Naples Starbucks.
Yeah.
Actually epicure plaza depending upon your vintage.
Starbucks is open.
So.
Oh, that looks great.
Starbucks is open, which I'm sure you are all aware.
Yep.
Um, for those that uh, need their morning caffeine. So, uh, I have been at the property numerous times. The, the owner's actually been very good keeping us up to date and appraised on. Various things. Um. Some, it's just the normal evolution of construction, right? That there's a, a few handful of uh. Things that we've needed to review uh, as we've gone along. So. One of the items is the landscape islands in the parking area. Which are. Uh, these are rain gardens. So these are depressed areas. Um, these are open on. Which way is this grading? This one, so this island here that's opposite, what's really uh, eight fifty. Is open on this side. So the storm water here is going to run into. This island and this island uh, is actually depressed. So the curb's going to be high and rather than the mulch being mounted up on top. And everything's sitting pretty, pretty. Everything's going to be sunk in a little bit with some river stone. Um, there's a surface drain so that ideally it's not overflowing. And then pipe into the closed drainage system, but it's going to offer some infiltration for our small storms and. Um, and then it'll be piped. There's the pipe connection there for larger storms. Um, those of you that are, have frequented um, the plaza in the evenings. Um, particularly our weekend evenings, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Parking can get um, interesting at times. And um. Mr. Hayes even, uh, he got to the point because he was um. Having issues because people were parking in the landscape islands. People were parking everywhere. He introduced some large boulders into some of the landscape islands. Apparently a vehicle. Ran into slash over a boulder uh, in the later hours of one evening and now finds it appropriate to. Um. Be soliciting Mr. Hayes for compensation for fixing said vehicle because he ran into a boulder in the landscape island and. Oh my. So. Um, we are both suspicious that the trees in these planting islands perhaps will not um, survive. So. And there is a legitimate need for some snow storage. So he is agreeable to putting in. The, there's fountain grass and black eyed susan and typical type of uh. Rain garden type plants that'll help with uptake and nutrients and water, um, provide some nice visual. In the summertime, spring, summer, fall for us. But what I've suggested to him is let's get the trees out of these planting islands. They're. Um, I think they were service berry, Japanese service berry or lilac. What I got here. Ivory pillar, Japanese tree lilac. Neither one of us were really sure what that was. So what he's agree, I said, take them out of here. So that he has it available for snow storage in the winter. And. That we're not ruining trees if there's other oopses that take place. Um, but I told him I want them replanted somewhere on the property. So they are likely going to appear up here. He is thinking that they um. Uh, burning bush hedgerow here, he may opt to do something with. And I said, if you do, it needs a review because that is providing some screening. But if it's dated and overgrown, et cetera. So that's fine. You can redo it. It just, it needs the review. So. This is more of a, an FYI. Certainly if somebody disagrees with me, you can, it's kind of a speak now or forever hold your peace, but. I told him, these islands are going in. They will be rain gardens, but get the trees out and get them somewhere out so that he's got the area for snow storage. Um, but they will be planted, like I said, most likely here along the frontage. I asked for something with some, you know, put something with maybe some flowers in the spring, some color, something that's got some interest to it. We do have an easement that comes through here. There is a drainage easement. So he does have to be a little bit selective as to where. Those go. So, um, but that's where we've left it. So unless there's a concern.
Well, I can tell you from personal, because that's where I park. Um, that rain garden is going to be a problem.
The island's already there.
I know, I know, but.
Yeah.
Tell them not to put, like, I can barely make it with my truck.
No, I know.
When I'm backing out, I am definitely going to hit something.
Well, that's, we, we changed the, the geometry a little bit. So we, we couldn't, so the, the entire lot basically. Um, the, most of the parking spaces are not compliant. Traditional lengths, but it matched what had been approved at the time, right? So. Um, and we didn't want to lose any parking spaces.
Yeah.
But yeah, we did.
Boulders there because I will hit them.
No. No, but.
No, no, but that. The minute you said that, I'm like, I can totally see it happening because that's exactly where I park.
Yeah.
And it is.
It's tight. No, it's very tight. And on the weekends, it's even more so. Yeah, absolutely. So you, yeah, you're hard pressed to get a full. So you, yeah, you're hard pressed to get a full-size pickup truck or any type of full-size vehicle and it's very challenging.
Are those, is this gonna be worse for visibility?
Uh, I don't think so. The fountain grass, I don't think so. I don't think they're gonna get so tall. Um, I don't think he's just putting the real tone. So some of them can be like the smaller ornamental.
Okay.
Um, that you'll be able to see over. And if you're in a really low slung sedan, then maybe um, it might be a bit of a challenge coming around. But I, I, they're not big enough. The islands themselves aren't big enough.
Right, yeah.
To get anything too substantive. Um, and there'll be river rock in there as well. So I'm hoping it'll provide just a little different feel than what we've had there. So.
No, totally, kind of on subject but off subject, wasn't he gonna be doing a designated crosswalk?
Uh, so that's going in, yep.
Cause it has been a mess. I, I understand there's a lot of construction going on.
It's been a, a chance. I mean, they're, they're doing what they can. So they've got the crosswalk is coming in.
Overeats drivers who just pull off Route Four and park. And then they run to Naples.
Well, we get that. So that's.
That's what I'm saying.
He's done, he, so there's a couple of things that are going in. So there's, I don't think this is being painted here, but this crossing area here is gonna remain down in front of M and R Liquor and he's adding a light stanchion. So there's um, post-top lights. There's four post-top lights that are going in.
Yeah.
One here off the corner of M and R Liquor, uh, one in the seating area, basically in front of Fork and Fire. One in front of where the jewelry store is, and then another one here at the new crossing area in front of Starbucks. And this is a designated crossing area and he is installing um, an ornamental fence that's basically going to run in this, in this area here. You can see the.
I think it's already in.
So, oh, it may be in. I don't, so we had talked about it and I had talked with him because he's concerned about people bypassing it and crossing here as a, look, we can only fence so much. But the idea was to fence this so somebody doesn't walk straight out of Starbucks and straight, that it forces them to the crosswalk. Um, he may wrap that fence a little bit. Uh, I said, you're, you're certainly welcome to add a couple of additional lengths because it's just the block ornamental fence. Um, but then there's this crosswalk here that's part of the traffic signal, right? That's out at the frontage sidewalk.
Are they doing anything with that light cycle or no?
No.
Okay.
No, because they're not, there's no change in tendency use, et cetera. So. No, no, there's no change with the, the light itself, the traffic light. So, okay. So we're gonna let that roll. And so it's a small tweak to the, the plan. He's working on lighting. We've done a few lighting tests. Bruce and I've been out at various times. So it's a, it's moving along. It's questionable as to whether or not he's gonna get it paved this year. He wanted to get it all done this year and there's been a few.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It'd be, yeah. Now.
Anything after November first, the plants are questionable.
Right, right. Okay, so that one, we're all set. We'll continue to proceed. Uh, two thirty-one Farmington Avenue is an office building down uh, quite a ways down on Farmington Ave. And we've had, uh, the owner, uh, is also a tenant, has been in. And this was back in, I can't remember if it was the end of twenty-two or end of twenty-one. Thank you. So end of twenty-two was in and we, he redid a permit for the use mix in the building, office to medical. Our medical office uses, we have a higher parking requirement, one to one fifty. Office use is one per two twenty-five. So he, he got additional medical office use approved. And then he also then got uh, an agreement with the Red Cross next door for an additional five parking spaces for a little more medical office. He's now come to me and he has a tenant that's moving uh, that wants to increase their medical office space by four hundred and forty square feet. That's already office and it's going to medical office. So that net delta is one additional parking space. I've been out there and, and the owner has sent me photos. With this COVID shift, the office space is not, even the medical office with telehealth isn't being used the same way that you would. I mean, unless it's a pediatrician's office or something like that. These um, or dental office when you actually have to be worked on. But some of these with the telehealth, they're not, the, even the medical office isn't as busy. And the traditional office obviously is not as busy and having all the staff in every day of the week. So for this shift in one parking space, I, can he get it in? He was gonna stripe in one parking space here along this North Island. I don't really feel, I'd rather not do that at this particular point in time. Unless it's necessary. But all his reporting is the parking lot's thirty to forty percent full, which I think we're seeing on a regular basis in office areas. So unless there's, again, some other concern, I'm gonna let this roll, let him go to building permit and not require any additional permitting with this board at this point in time. We're good. We've seen a bunch of head nods. We're good.
Sounds good.
So um, to that, just as an FYI, because um, this has come up and I'm thinking we may need to start to revamp our parking requirement. Um, I've reached out to some former colleagues that are in the consulting um, business and are working with this and kind of all points of the state or in other in New England. And I also reached out to a colleague at the DOT to see if there are any uh, updated published reports on either parking studies or trip generation studies that are post-pandemic for office and medical office use, on hybrid uses to see what's available. And interestingly, um, the gentleman is, it's actually Matt Bloom, our former engineer, one of our engineers here, uh, indicated that the ITE, or Institute of Transportation Engineers is currently developing their next edition of the Trip Generation Manual and is scheduled to release in twenty twenty-five, which should include post-pandemic uh, data. They actually have uh, a posting on their website for a call for information. So, and that's really what it is. It's, it's a clearinghouse for everywhere from East Coast to West Coast to say, hey, if you've done your own trip generation studies or any type of traffic data study, submit it for verification and then that's used to help set these new benchmarks of information for traffic generation and then parking. So um, it sounds like we may have to wait, but it's nice to know that others are thinking of it and, and on a national scale. So we might have some better data to work with here in a year or so. So. Okay. Uh, and that's all I have. Unless anybody has any other question for me.
I just, I drove down Coppermine for the first time in a long time today and noticed um, both Le Jardin Way and then the other one, which I forgot. Yeah, Dominique's Court. It was like, wow, okay.
Yes, yeah, both are moving along. Yes.
What's um, happening with the gas station at Burlington and?
Yes.
I've had some questions from residents.
Sure. So uh, gas stations at Burlington and one seventy-seven, they just recently finished with DOT. They had submitted plans to us that um, did not address all the engineering and TPZ comments. So Bruce and I reoriented them to that. Uh, we just got uh, revised plans back last week, so we're gonna be taking a look at them and they are intent to get going. So the fellows had a meeting with them out on site because they had started to take down some trees. They're gonna get the erosion control in and then they'll start clearing and um, stumping the uh, the site. So we should start seeing some movement here, whether or not they'll have foundations in this year. I'm not sure. I think that's probably they'd like to still try to do that. Yeah, I'm not sure that's gonna.
They've cleared all their uh, remediation as necessary.
So that was all done ahead of time. So that was done this summer. There was groups, there, there were multiple trucks and days of people on the property and doing all of that, that work, correct? Um, I haven't seen a closure report. I can ask for one to see where that stands.
Well, we're on the topic of uh, gas stations, one on Route Six, five corners.
Uh, yes, we were in touch with Mr. Hoab about that because we've been um, received some inquiries as well. So I actually was just on the phone with him today. He indicated um, he's been in touch with the owner. They are going to get a demo permit into us in the next couple of weeks with the commitment to have at least the building demoed before the end of the year. Uh, they do have a blight hearing coming up so that we had pushed, both are running in parallel track. So the blight officer, the new hearing officer gave them leeway to get through TPZ. But the intent is to at, at a minimum, get the building down before the end of the year.
Yeah, and that's what he had set up here.
They said they're, people are.
Absolutely.
In your head.
Yes, and I believe they're still working with DOT as well.
One other thing, the new bus depot, did that go to litigation with the people across the street? Okay.
No, it never did. They, they never, so they had sent an email indicating that perhaps it was gonna go that way and then they never officially filed.
It did. Okay.
No, so the only thing we currently have in litigation is thirty-four West District. So that is uh,
Yep.
The.
Carrier property or the.
Correct. So the.
With the old barn.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So they, um, their brief was submitted at the end of August. Ours is due then at the end of next week. And then her rebuttal is due for the second or third week of October and then we'll go from there.
Um, and it just popped in. We may have already talked about this, but remember there was a nail salon or something going in next to Modern Tire?
Yeah.
Whatever happened?
They apparently.
Puzzled out.
It's a weird.
Yeah, I think it didn't, I, I think they really understand the amount of work that was needed in the building in order to use it as a nail salon.
So I drove by again today and I'm like, wait a second, that, we did something with that.
We fielded calls.
No, that was the one.
Not weekly, but uh, certainly a couple of times a month with all sorts of interesting requests.
Really?
Yes, including the owner thinking that they might use it as another set of base.
Yeah.
For the, which is fine. So we've had, we've had a number of conversations.
Yes, yeah.
Right, yeah, the parking issue.
Yeah, the parking's a, a challenge. So you're, you're not gonna get like a restaurant in there because it just, you can't. And, and even the parking they have is in the DOT right away. Yeah, that right away does a really odd jog there. And so it's not all avail, so even though it's parked out, now whether or not there's an actual agreement with the DOT, I don't, I don't, I don't know offhand. I can't remember if we've ever looked it up or not. But yeah, no, the parking isn't all theirs. Here I am. See where that, that yellow line's the property line.
Oh.
Oh, wow. So I get like six spaces.
Wow. Interesting.
So it just, it continues, right? So it does this jog over the river and then it just continues. It does some really interesting things. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
While we're on that stretch of the road, is Sugo open or closed?
Close.
Okay, cause I drove by, okay. I was just gonna say I saw trucks that looked, you know, a couple of cars there and I.
The mural's been painted over.
Yeah, they painted the mural over.
Okay. That's what I thought. I thought it had closed, but then I thought I saw.
Where there's Italian Portuguese.
Italian Portuguese, another restaurant.
My PT is right across the street.
Interesting, okay.
Okay.
That's my inside information from physical therapy.
You never know what you're gonna learn.
Right.
Who's gonna put in that?
Are we good?
I don't have.
No, we have to approve Sandy's minutes.
Well, I was gonna get to that.
Oh, okay.
There should be, and all the other stuff. I forgot about the public hearing, but I remembered the minutes. Can we get a motion in a second to approve the minutes from July twenty-second, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. PNC meeting.
There you go, you can suck.
Any in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Have a good night, everybody.